That was the old amphitheater. That was established back in the sixties. He was supposed to follow us. Looks like he has, he's inspired and he's looking off to the horizon for an inspiration there. And as you can see, there's a lot of smiling faces, a lot of dedicated people, but a lot of gray hair. Our average age, as far as our community members, are about sixty-two. But we have a vision. We are inspired and we want to make progress. That's one of the local attractions of the wood. I'll tell you, we are absolutely excited and pleased as far as how everything turned out. And we wanted to come by, back and express our appreciation as far as that you had vision with us and that you had confidence that we would complete our mission. We worked and we completed six hundred feet, six hundred feet of ditching that we dug. And basically what we found out with the recreation area is blessed with a lot of rocks. So it was a difficult task and the conditions that we worked in. And it's just like everything else. When you plan on something and you, you know, you made it with lumber and machinery and work as far as manpower to do it. And of course, what does it do? It rains. So, you know, as far as what we're dealing with the rocks and the mud and all that we did, basically, I mean, over a two-week period, we were able to complete this. And this was due also with COVID as far as the restrictions we had, as far as the difficulty that everyone had last year. But we had a, like I said, we had a vision. We were inspired by your confidence that you bestowed upon us. And I tell you, we went from a seven-by-thirty-three-foot stage to a twenty-by-thirty-six. The decking is stained. We had, we went from a twenty amp breaker system to a one-hundred amp breaker system. And basically, you know, what we had done, all this work, all this volunteer hours, all this pain and suffering that we went through for a one-day event. But it's an event that we actually love and we love to bring this to Southwest Virginia. It's just, it's just, the way the things came together was absolutely fantastic. With over a thousand volunteer service hours, we were able to do that. But we weren't able to do that without our valued sponsors. Scott County, the city of Norton, Wise County, town of Big Stone, Old Dominion, Axon Handel Distributing. And that was a blessing as far as Axon Handel Distributing from Lee County. They came through and they donated all of the railing and all of the uprights as far as for the project, which actually just topped it off. And it just made it just a, the hand-hued logs that they produce are just absolutely beautiful. So just our hats are just in our hands with, as far as the people that have helped us with this project. Doug Humphries, which is also a Scott County resident. And all of this started with a group of individuals, they call them the Gang of Five, that donated twelve hundred dollars. And that was three years ago. And we were entrusted with this money and we saved this money until we were able to achieve this project. So I tell you, it's a, it's a project that we love. It was from our heart. A lot of people that came together that helped us with this project. And it is truly a regional event. All the people that came together that helped us is just absolutely fantastic. We have our music and our lineup. And actually, where we had to cancel last year, we actually tried to, our normal date is in June and we tried to postpone it to August. And unfortunately, we weren't able to have that event because of COVID. But we have done our due diligence. We have gotten with the state. We've gotten with our local health department. We've gotten with the feds. And the funny story about that is whenever we started checking on this, the local told us to go to the state. The state told us to go to the feds. The fed told us to go back to the state and the state wound up sending us back to Wise. So basically, through all of that, we were able to determine that we will have an ample amount of space and we will be able to go on with our project as far as the music festival. This year's event, our opening ceremonies are going to start about eleven o'clock with opening ceremonies. Previously, we haven't actually tied down the opening events yet, but we've also utilized Rolling Thunder, VFW, with our opening events. And those are always just great additions to the opening as far as for the festival. We've also had bagpipes of the mountain, folks. It's absolutely a beautiful, beautiful sound if you think about it up in the mountain. Whenever the bagpipes start playing and it goes down that valley, it's just absolutely just breathtaking as far as that. The year before last, our attendance was right at in between twenty-two to twenty-three hundred people. With this being one of the first outdoor events after COVID, we're not exactly sure exactly how many people are going to be at the event. But we are ready. Our lineup, like I said, our opening ceremony is going to start at eleven o'clock. From eleven forty-five, Chris Rose. And we always have always tried to utilize some local talent, younger talent, at the very beginning of the festival to give them some stage presence and give an opportunity to perform in front of different people. But Chris Rose is a wonderful program, has a wonderful class up at UVA. And it's the Papa Joe Bluegrass Band. And the students that are also in that program. So we're tickled to have them as far as one of the opening acts. The Children's Sisters are just a wonderful group of young ladies that are great as far as their musical talent. And at two o'clock, we have Hillbilly Band, we have the Sean Patrick Whiting Band, the Craig Street Ramblers, which also played the music for our video, and the Billy Crawford Band. So we have a great lineup planned for this year. And just really super excited about being able to do that. Buddy, if you'd like to come up and-
What's the date on it?
The date's going to be on June nineteenth this year, which is Father's Day weekend. Would I pin you off?
No.
Remove the mask. I don't want to do that. I have a horsehair breathing. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you about this wonderful festival that we're putting on. And thank you all for your contribution last year, which enabled us to complete these projects. In front of you, I'll briefly just go over, there's no reason we try to tell you everything's on these papers. You can read that at your convenience. But basically, we had to hire a master electrician and carpenter to lead the projects as far as doing the electrical and the stage. Other than that, all of the work was done by the ten High Knob Music Festival committee members. And he just led us and we did, you know, I'll say ninety percent of the labor. But he was, we had to have someone who was certified to sign off on the electrical and the carpenter work, make sure it's all done by code, standard regulation. Chris told you, it was a six-hundred-foot-long ditch that we had to dig to put conduit and electrical in. That, that cost was forty-one fifty-five point forty-six. And our volunteer committee put in three hundred and nineteen work hours on the mountain to complete that project. Wise County Board of Supervisors completely funded the electrical project. The next project was the stage upgrade. You saw the pitch of the stage. It's absolutely incredible. And we hope it'll beat our fifty years. We built it to last for a long, long time. The, the stage cost, Chris went over some of the details about the stage. It's huge. It's twenty feet deep and thirty-six feet wide. It would barely fit in this room, I guess, as far as the width goes. The cost on the, the stage project was six thousand nine hundred dollars and twenty-eight cents, of which you all donated two thousand dollars and we're just so very grateful. The town of Norton, the city of Norton, rather, donated significant money to it. The town of Big Stone Gap donated money to it. Old Dominion Power Kentucky Utilities donated toward the stage. Total cost of both of these projects was over ten thousand dollars. And we raised all of that money through the help of boards and supervisors and other sponsors. To build the stage, we spent six hundred and eighty-seven volunteer hours from the ten High Knob Music Festival committee members. So, well, the six hundred and eighty-seven was a total. We spent three hundred and sixty-eight hours building the stage. Forest Service, I think rates, the dollar per hour, if you were having to pay labor to get work like this done, is probably upwards of thirty dollars an hour. And we put in better part of seven hundred hours of volunteer work. So that's how we put up, we added to the project. But we couldn't have done it without you guys helping us. One thing I'd like for you to think about, this year, Chris mentioned that we do intend to have the festival. We, we haven't known, I don't think any of us have known, what we could do this year. But we, we were ready right up to the last minute. We postponed once last year and we finally had to just cancel out. This year, it looks like we're going to be able to, to do the festival. But we are just a couple of weeks into thinking we really can get this done. So now we're two months and a couple of weeks at the most out from festival date. So what we would like to ask you all to consider is donating to us to help us advertise. And it's an urgent need to get billboards up, get our poster boards that we put in storefronts and so forth printed, flyers made up and radio, well, a lot of the other advertisement may not cost a lot, but billboards are expensive. But we would respectfully ask you all to consider helping us again this year. And we're so appreciative for what you did last year. You gave us two thousand last year. If you could, if it was possible, you could do that this year. That would be great. If you can't, whatever you might be able to do to help us would be appreciated. Chris went over the, the stage schedule, so I'll skip through that. I included in my handout, the third, the third page, I think, just a note from Michelle Davalos, the district ranger and the recreation program manager, Brandon Olinger, and Jeff Guding, he's our volunteer coordinator for the forestry service. In this, they say, "We would like to thank you so much for all the volunteer efforts in fiscal year 2020." I know that's been a difficult year with COVID-19, social distancing and lack of in-person meetings. However, we have still found a way to make the volunteer services program work. We're so appreciative for your dedication to the public plans. And we're very proud of that because we truly do volunteer to try to make High Knob better. Not, not just for us, as Chris pointed out, we actually do one, one-day festival. But we work all year long to try to improve the High Knob recreation area. We, we mow, we cut brush and weeds and, and just anything that we have to do to try to make it look beautiful up there. So at any rate, I won't keep you longer. I'll turn it back over to Chris. But thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you and thank you for your donation. Again, a lot of things that we've been involved in as far as the trash pickup. AmeriCorps, which is a valuable asset that they've been utilizing as far as developing the trails of High Knob. The cloud splitter, we had a large Facebook presence. On several posts, we had over sixty-eight thousand hits. And our festival, as far as online presence, has grown that goodness. I'd say we have thirty to forty states represented as far as looking at our Facebook page and seeing what's coming up. And we have also over three thousand followers on Facebook. But why we do this is that we do have a love of our, of our, our area. And we want to enhance it. We want people to come in. We want people to come and enjoy what we have to offer. Future projects, we're looking at putting a roof as far as over top of the stage. We're also looking at a handicap, and this is going to be one of the first things we're going to do, is at the top of the hill, we want to build a handicap accessible platform, which is going to be easily done because there is already a paved pathway from the parking lot that we can also come in and build this handicap platform. So that's going to be another thing that's going to benefit as far as that area. But, you know, we also wanted to, one last thing was we wanted to show our appreciation. And we made phone calls. We called overseas. We called different places. We wanted to, you know, show our appreciation and then bring something to the, the board. And Buddy, if you'd like to, what we wound up, I mean, we called everywhere. I mean, from overseas to South America. And but what we found was all roads lead back to Southwest Virginia. And one of the committee members live in South, in Scott County, up on Osmond Ridge, which was one of the prettiest places in God's country. But one of the things that we did is that we made these nice little tokens here. And we didn't drink all of them. But as a token of our appreciation, just wanted to bring you all something that, that we make as a little fundraiser for the festival.
Thank you.
Well, I want to ask, the three-dollar admission fee that the Fed charged get in there, do they still do that if you're having a penalty? Do they pay the three bucks to get in?
Yes, and that is totally out of our control. It's, it's-
They won't waive that for that one day or anything?
They, we have literally begged them to do it and to the point where they finally just said, "Quit asking," because that's not something that even they-
I'm negotiating.
At, at our Norton office, Forest Service office, they can't waive it.
Well, so that y'all have that money, it would help a lot, you know, if they did it and then give it back to the festival, so.
Well, and that's the, that's the other disappointing thing about the parking fee. That money really doesn't even stay in our region. So, but we have tried and-
Well, they enforced a fifty-dollar ticket to stop in there. Bart can't play, take a picture. I doubt the vehicle gonna give me a fifty-dollar ticket for not paying the three-dollar fee. I bet you turned, took a picture in there where my ticket was.
Yeah.
So they're strict about it.
Right.
They're serious about it.
Yeah, we really had to pay it. And really, we, we, we did everything we could possibly do. Tried to shape them into not charging because we're trying to do a totally free festival where you can bring families and kids and-
Y'all don't charge admission fee or anything to people?
We don't charge anything.
That's what I thought when I wanted these donors to hear that.
Yeah, we do not charge any admission and literally we have, at some point, we have made an aggravation of ourselves by trying to get them to waive the fee. And we just cannot do it.
So who do you have to pay the fee to?
Federal government, Forest Service. It's a, it's an honorary system. You pull in, you get the, you put the money up a little bit, the thing, but the ticket on your way, she'll go on. But it's just, but you got, you better pay it.
Yeah, and did it go to, did they actually raise it to five dollars, they were talking this? I believe the fee may have been raised to five dollars now. Now, that's still not very much money to be able to bring your kids and be able to go all around in, in the area. But to us, we realize that our, our region is, a large percentage of it's impoverished. And one of the things that we're trying to do is provide a venue where people can bring families. We, we set up a food tent and we sell brats and, and it's really good food. And it's not very high-priced. But people can actually come to this festival and bring a cooler with some drinks and some sandwiches and not, not have to pay anything to force to spend literally a whole day and evening in the mountains. So that's, that's what we're trying to do. National Forest recently did raise that to five dollars. But at our last meeting, we asked what we could do as far as to try to reduce that cost. And Brandon Olinger gave me some points as far as how we can actually contact and write up and compare the, the cost of entrance fee to Bar Camp, Cave Springs. There's several different parks that only charge three dollars. And why they raised the recreation area to five dollars, I don't know. But we do have plans as far as to try to do that. One other thing that I didn't share with you that we're also quite proud of is that one thing we ask festival, festival goers to do for us is instead of paying to come into the festival, we ask them to bring three cans of canned food. The last time we did that, we, we, actually, they, they donated close to two tons of food, canned food to us that we donated to the Food Bank. So we're quite proud of that also. But again, folks, we appreciate the confidence you had in us, the faith that you had in us that we would complete a project. And I hope that you're pleased with what we have accomplished and what we did as far as the final project. But it's still a working process. But always keep in mind that we did all this work for a one-day event. So this is ready for weddings, other functions as far as that can go on up on the mountain. I've gotten in touch with Pro Arts. Pro Arts is looking at that pretty strong as far as having a Pro Arts event on top of the mountain. Now, wouldn't that be something to have symphony in the mountains and actually in the mountains? And could you imagine if you were up at the observation tower listening to an orchestra and that sound coming up and filtering through the valley up to the top of the mountain? I think that would be absolutely just stunning. But we are blessed with one of the prettiest places in Southwest Virginia in God's country. And what we're trying to do is trying to enhance and trying to build off of it. And again, we couldn't do that without your all's help and without your vision that you shared with us. But folks, we do appreciate it very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
One thing too, y'all may not know, that tower you showed in the video, Scott County has fifteen thousand dollars in that too. So this board has been, when they run the oven down, they had to be fundraising. But Scott County did it at fifty, fifteen thousand dollars in that endeavor though. It's technically in Wise County, but still, we, we've been a bit off running.
But folks, we do appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next items, I think y'all take a break. Go ahead. Keep going. They need a break. Take a break. All right. Take about ten. Get back to orders. The money that, that provided for them was two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budgeted. Nothing was budgeted for the twenty and twenty-one fiscal year. Y'all stopped on this. I don't know, we, we gave them two thousand dollars two years ago. And they need two thousand again for advertising stuff. They bled that anyway. Y'all stopped on this. I don't know, we, we, I don't, the, the venue is in Wise County. Like I said, the Scott County has had them put money into that tower, fifteen thousand dollars back several years ago for that tower they constructed. It's all right there together, pretty close. Y'all stopped on this, find it, how you want to do it. We gave two thousand two years ago, so they went and requested two thousand again. It would have been, it was like this fiscal year, the fiscal year before this one. Been nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year. We're in the twenty, twenty-one fiscal year, so that's where we're at. Y'all stopped.
Well, I'm sure we'll probably have a lot of people going there and have been a part of all that, I would imagine. And there's lots of people come from a lot of states, so. I mean, if it's two years ago, and I think we ought to probably do something on that, whatever the hell the time.
Would there be contingency money?
Yeah, if you have somewhere.
Not now.
I didn't take it on.
I'll agree with Marshall. You know, eventually, we can get it back on our side of the mountain. Bar Camp, or maybe they're going over to Bar Camp or something, so.
And he said they were, they were needing it for advertising.
Yes.
If they don't advertise it, then there won't be anybody again.
Well, they do.
And our name will be on the advertising.
Well, so they go all over that mountain when they have that cloud splitter. You know, I was up there when my son was running the race and, and, I mean, you're all over the top of that mountain. Those runners are everywhere. And they have those substations set up. And, and you arrive at all sorts of, you know, advertisement, things like that, so.
So my question, my question is, and I fully support the music festival, but does this set a precedent for other festivals that are going to, that we don't know about yet at this point? Like Dangin', I know Dangin' and Fourth of July, maybe, you know.
Nicholsville Days.
Nicholsville Days, Duffield Day, Nicholsville, Duffield. You know, this, if they're going to do something at Carterfold this year, those types of things, I just-
I mean, well, this is something the boards have had to do every, every year.
Sure.
And the people come before the boards and making the requests and things of that nature, if that's what you're talking about. That's nothing new. Danny knows that. Darrell knows that. They've been on previous boards and, and so.
Well, as other music venues, for example, Allen Hicks, and I start back, I mean, I go to that regularly. There's probably forty, fifty people goes to that. You got the one biggest is Carterfold. You know, then we have other festivals, music type venues that goes on in the county. So I don't know, we, I, I agree, we need probably do something about, I'm not sure about the two grand. It's not.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I feel like we need to do something. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Two thousand.
Darrell says, you put in four of the motions.
Let's talk about it first, make sure that's, you know.
That's just a suggestion.
Okay. And the thing about, we do, we do benefit from it. I mean, maybe not as much as Norton and Wise County does, but there is some, it's as close as it is to the, you know, to Scott County. I, I can see doing something. And if you've been up there, you get a chance to go, be sure you pay three dollars or five, you know. But if you go, it's, it's amazing. Amazing. They got a trail around that lake, there's a High Knob Lake. And you got, you walk around, there's a lot to do there. And you go over there and look at it, really, it's the most beautiful place.
Can I add something?
Yes, ma'am.
In the past, you've also done a thousand dollars for Duffield Days and Nicholsville Days. So that's the mount, you know, that you've considered in the past for the other festivals.
Good morning.
That's a good point. A thousand, is that what you said? A thousand, at least to those? I want to get a thousand, but would that be too little?
Whatever. Y'all want to do, I'm fine with whatever we do, but. I can't, I, I said a thousand. I mean, I, I, yeah. And the reason behind that is that isn't the amount we give the other, you know, the towns and stuff, so.
In Scott County?
Yeah, in Scott County. Y'all stopped.
Yeah, I agree. I think a thousand.
Thousand?
Yeah. I mean, when they're having this, some of this.
You're saying it off the top.
I'm sorry. That's my favorite.
I would do something. I mean, I, I mean, I don't think we should give a festival in Wise County what we give festivals in our own.
It's not all just in Wise County. This, while this is happening on the mountain.
It's not all just in Wise County, this, while this is happening, and parts of Scott County.
The cloud splitter thing is in both counties.
So we need Scott County.
Well, that part of it, the festival, while Wise County.
Well, the cloud splitter's a big part of it, because I mean, you're talking about three days, I mean, for the one hundred mile marathon, so that's a pretty big event.
And I'll tell you, they, I mean, those other counties, they do promote the devil bathtub too, which is gonna be something, I think, we'll see down the road, some bent in front.
I mean, there's people all over the top of that mountain all that weekend, from Scott County, I mean, Wise County, from all the counties around, the other people, they don't ever work, so.
Mr. Chairman, I want the Hainaut Enhancement Corporation and the Forest Outdoor Recreation Group. And when we're looking at Hainaut, I'd encourage you not to look at the county line, because that's a regional asset that's being promoted regionally. And if we have tourists that come and pull from the tri-cities, they're coming through Scott County to go to these events on Hainaut. And, you know, Norton is making a lot of investments in the mountain, and Wise County's making a lot of investments in the mountain, and it may be our place to do so as well.
Yeah, that is one. Well, I meant a thousand, you want to do that, would you live with that?
Yeah, I could, I vote against it.
Okay, that's what you're supposed to do, that's what you're elected to do.
Absolutely.
So that's what you're there for. Well, are you gonna put in most of a thousand dollars in use?
A thousand dollars from contingency.
Okay. Do you have made a motion for a thousand dollars from a contingency fine? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tippin, second, any other discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed? Did you oppose?
No, I said aye.
Oh, I didn't.
I think a thousand's fine, and I think, and I think that's the right thing to do, you know, in the grand scheme and the bigger picture.
I do too. Mr. Daniels made a good point.
Yep.
I agree. And I do try to look at the big picture, and that is the big picture, because it is.
That's where I learned the drive, nineteen fifty-eight Ford, I learned the drive with her.
Oh, really? Okay, sounds special to you.
I'm still learning, by the way. Alright, anything else on that? Not we go to the ten telecommunication suite. There is a resolution that you hope you've looked at, and as we do this every year, let me read the bottom part of it. Now therefore, be resolved that Scott County Board Supervisors declared the week of April eleventh through the seventh, ten, two thousand twenty-one to be nice on telecommunication week in Scott County, Virginia, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county citizens safe. We do this every year, and I think it's a great thing, those folks work hard, had one dispatcher tell me that she was asked on the phone twice when somebody committed suicide. Can you imagine being the last person on the phone? Those people go through a lot. So I think it's a great thing we're doing to honor those people with this resolution. Any comments, not we entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Tippin made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tippin, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, so the motion carried. If you get a chance, those folks, you can thank them for what they do and, besides, I like a list of all the scanners that they go through a lot, they really do. Out of eleven, ratification of family crisis support service letter of support, Ms. Darrell, you want to address that? It's in the tablet that you can go and address if you would.
The letter is on your tablet, this is the letter that I emailed you about to get authorization to go ahead and sign the letter of support, which I have done. And the letter is supporting, it's a regional approach for family crisis support services, which is located in Norton. They've had some issues with their facility and they've applied to the HCD for grant money to build a new facility, so this is just supporting their efforts in getting that grant.
Okay, we can do this, all fair and you decide later, I can correct you later.
That's correct, we just need to write it by, sorry, we're done.
Okay, need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Alright. Ms. Tippin made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herron, second, all fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item, winter ever trysters. We have that last month and we, I don't know, may have overstated what we said. You got the email from our county attorney about doing what we said we would do, and I value her opinion, that's what we got her for, and we're not so sure that we can do what we said we were gonna do. Do you want to address this any more than that, Sally, if you would?
It's, and just what you said there, it's not that you can or can't, you can, that's whether you should.
Yeah.
And I just cautioned you against whether you should or not.
Right.
So that you're not showing favoritism, so you're not setting a precedent for the future. I just wanted to give you some things to think about. I support the business that he's doing, I think it's a great service to the county, it has nothing to do with him in particular, it's requests like that in general, and what you'll do the next time somebody comes before you and asks for a break.
And I, as chairman, I messed up, I'll tell you how I did it. I should have said, we'll take this, we'll look at this for the next month, we should have never went as far as we did with it. And so, and after the meeting, you know, we talked about it, and I should have said, well, we'll delay it until the April meeting and then, and not tell them what we're gonna do, we would discuss it. So then after the fact, we find out maybe this may not be the right way to go. I wish that they were here, we didn't know to be here, I guess, and to talk about this. And what it was, it was to, they're paying forty bucks a ton to dispose that, then we were gonna put a limit, no more than two thousand dollars annually would be the most they would pay. They're paying about four, forty-five hundred now, I think, last year, bills, that was what they said they paid.
Something like that.
Yeah, that's forty bucks a ton. And so we were, and the reason that I was thinking the way I was, was trying to see what they had done in Russell County, and they did a, it's like a five hundred dollar deal or something, they paid, and that's all they would pay. I thought, well, we're not Russell County, but trying to come close to doing what they were doing there, so we said the two thousand dollars would be the limit, that's the most he would pay. He said his business is really growing and it's gonna, that amount is gonna increase. Wasn't a big deal when it wasn't as much, Tri-City was picking up. But anyway, we said we would, we would do that, and like I said, I should have never allowed to come to a vote then, we should have delayed, we could give our attorney time to study this out and recommend back to this board, that's why, that's why she is there. And that means the bypass server, we should have waited, but we didn't, I didn't. So anyway, your all stops on us, how to handle it now, your thoughts?
Have you talked to him at all?
I have not, I was going to and I haven't, I didn't know really what to say till I hear from you all, so.
Danny, I think from now on, anything that comes up like that on that citizen expression, that we should do just what you said, we shouldn't make a quick decision, we should postpone it a month and let, if we possibly can.
We can.
Unless it's emergency, because about every time we do something like that, we mess up.
Yeah. And I, and I'll tell you, I'll be honest with you, I missed Bree to not be in here at Sally, you're gonna kind of get me off the side, but I haven't yelled at it across the room, and so it helps me to get y'all back up here maybe sooner than later and coach me on this, because I'm, you know, it was, it would help if we did that. But anyway, but how we proceed now, I guess, is what I'm, you know.
Vice Mayor, I had a bigger problem with this than just about anything that we faced. And I didn't know how to approach it, that I felt bad about, until I got Sally's. And my philosophy, if it's not fixed, not broken, don't fix it. And I got to thinking back when Geek City, town of Geek City, and Little Wisco asked us to not charge them tax on some property that they were gonna tear some houses, they owe tax, somebody owed tax. And we said, no, you're gonna pay it, because it's on the books. This has been on our books for thirty, forty years, hasn't it?
The transfer station part since two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine, right. But I, if, we'd be opening a can of worms by, you know, doing this for him, and then what's gonna happen when another business comes in, or a private business, or even one of our big businesses, if that field walks in and says, we did lead our quota this month, and we have a little off on our machinery tax or something, so. Now, I have a problem with it, Vice Mayor.
Like I said, we should have waited, I should have never allowed to come to a vote then, what we decided to do, but, and I'm with you all, and I hate to tell this guy, he was here, we'll do one thing, then we do something different, that's the only downside as far as I'm concerned, is him leaving here with the thought that, well, we're gonna do it, and if we don't, now I'm not sure, we should, we should take the advice of our attorney, that's why she's there, and, but like I said, we should have never done anything while they're here, we should have waited, give us time for her to research and look at the orders that had been put in place back in two thousand nine and then went with that.
I had reservations about plotting for it too, but the reason I leave it is because of the savings on our trucks.
Yeah, Bill did a good job with that.
Yeah, he did.
That kind of made me think more of it too, but still, it's not that big a savings. I mean, it's not anything, it's more of a major break.
Well, what I, you know, our, our small businesses, let's say they take their trash up, do they have to pay to take their trash?
Any business, any commercial entity should.
See, that's, that's the problem I had with it, if, if we would let him do that, then we would have to relieve them too, because they're, they're taking our trash to the landfill, so technically, they're doing the same thing on a smaller scale. You know, and I, I don't, if, if we did it for him, we'd have to do it for all.
Yes.
And that's what I was trying to get at last month, and I couldn't get it, I couldn't get everything to flow out right.
That's right.
But that, that's, that, that would be the problem. And after I've thought about it a month, you know, I know he's have to pay four thousand, forty-five hundred dollars, whatever it is, that forty-five hundred dollars might be keeping him a business as much as what he is. If we relieved that, that might invite somebody else to come into our county and give him more competition. So really, the forty-four thousand, forty-five hundred dollars might be, in a way, a blessing to him.
One scenario I thought about, you know, you mentioned that it's household waste that people have paid for anyway. Well, the whole town of Weber City has waste management that does household pickup, and they take their waste to their facility and blump. But what would keep them from seeing this, if they didn't have to pay a tip and fee at our transfer station, bringing all that waste to the transfer station, then we'd have to turn around and pay them to take it.
Right.
I mean, it, it set a big precedent, it could open up a huge can of worms, when you start thinking about all the scenarios that could happen.
But, but the big thing with our small businesses, you know, is they're, they're supposed to pay, you know, so, and technically, they would be doing the same thing as what he's doing. But, and I, I'm thankful that he's doing it.
I use them, I love them, they, I really do.
But, you know, I, I feel like we need to leave it the same, myself.
His rates are pretty low, right?
Twenty-five dollars?
Yeah, so a lot of other places don't pay much more than that. Maybe he can incorporate that into, you know, he's a businessman, obviously, and he can incorporate that into his business plan, should be able to recruit, be able to recruit that, I would think. And I agree with what everybody else has said here too, and I agree with Darrell. I think we make a lot of decisions, you know, very quickly, and we should have had time to think about them in silken, in white.
It's my fault.
Yeah.
Y'all need to probably, I mean, y'all throw something at me or something.
Well, I'll throw my bottle in.
I don't get a shot.
Not that big one.
We just shot.
I think, you know, this is typically what other boards have done before and so forth, we just kind of follow precedence, and so, you know, following precedence is not always the best way to go a lot of times, so.
Sally, how can we undo this?
Well, you just say you're gonna leave it as is.
Okay.
All you did last month was.
We didn't actually vote on it, I mean, we just voted.
All you did is, you know, want me to come back with a resolution, so you just don't adopt the resolution and lay it on.
So you don't do anything, just, uh?
No, I mean, you wouldn't have to take any action.
I need to send him a letter.
I mean, some, somebody needs to communicate it directly to him somehow, but either you or.
I can.
Whatever, but.
I, I got his number, I can.
And, you know, lay it on.
I will.
On the attorney.
So we don't need to do anything here, it's for the board, we don't need to vote on nothing, too.
And lay it on the attorney, you know.
Say it again?
Lay it on me.
I hadn't thought about that. It's not a lecture year, so we can take blame, it's not a lecture year, because lecture year, a dollar. Maybe I'll have a little fun, but you know, we're boring sometimes. Alright, was leave as is, and I will call him and let him know that we didn't do anything, we didn't want to change that, and leave it as is, I'll take your, alright. Bookkeeping.
I've got a big list, so get ready. We'll start with appropriations. Appropriate, you got your yellow sheet, so give me a second.
Got it.
And then I'll have the ones from the Mosley Architects I'll incorporate in. Appropriate eight thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty cents to share repair and maintenance vehicles, three one two zero zero dash six zero zero nine, for insurance claims received and deposited at the treasurer's office. Note deposited in three one one eight nine nine zero dash one nine for the following. One thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety cents on one eleven, two thousand twenty-one, one thousand nine ninety-six on one twenty-eight twenty-one, one hundred and fifty dollars on two ten, twenty twenty-one, and eight thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and sixty-three cents on two ten, twenty twenty-one. Please appropriate twelve thousand dollars to Circuit Court Clerk's Technology Trust Fund, Capital Outlay Office Equipment, two nine dash two one six five five dash eight one zero two, for monies received and deposited at the treasurer's office. Appropriate one thousand seven hundred two dollars and seventy-two cents to Rescue Services for for life, three two three zero zero dash five six four five, for monies received and deposited at the treasurer's office. Appropriate twenty-six thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars to Sheriff Vehicle Replacement, three one two zero zero dash eight zero zero one, for a total loss insurance claim received and deposited at the treasurer's office. Appropriate two hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty cents to Park Golf Course Merchandise for resale, seven one 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 zero dash six zero one five, for reimbursement received and deposited at the treasurer's office. Appropriate forty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents to Sheriff Vehicle Replacement, three one two zero zero dash eight zero zero one, for reimbursement received and deposited at the treasurer's office. And appropriate sixty-three thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars to four zero zero nine zero four three six zero zero dash three 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 zero fund thirty-seven, Maintenance and Construction. I don't think that's the right fund number, so strip that, but Maintenance and Construction, Courthouse Maintenance Fund, we'll go that route.
Alright.
And under, that's all the appropriations.
Need a motion, I'll be there, on appropriations, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Bree, you made a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Mr. Tippin, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
That license, that license you mentioned it.
That's what we did earlier for the.
I got you.
Okay.
Yeah, that takes the forty-three, three fifty-six, and the twenty thousand, and moves them into Courthouse Maintenance Fund, because this will be a six-month project and it'll be between budget years, so putting it in Courthouse Maintenance Fund allows that to carry over. So under transfers.
Which, which.
Sorry.
Okay. I got a motion, second, all fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried, no, sorry.
Okay, transfers, please transfer two thousand dollars from Information Systems Manager, Capital Outlay, one two five four zero dash eight one zero two, to repairs and maintenance, one two five four zero dash three three one zero.
You have a motion on the transfers?
I've got two more.
Okay, sorry.
And transfer forty-three thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars from three zero zero one zero one eight nine nine zero dash zero zero one four, reconciliation from regional jail, to three dash zero zero nine four zero four one zero five zero dash zero 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 one, transfer funds from general fund. And then, need to transfer twenty thousand dollars from four zero zero one zero one one zero one zero dash five eight four zero for contingency, to three zero zero nine zero four one zero five zero dash zero 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 one, transfer funds from general fund. And that's all the transfers.
Do we have a motion to make these transfers?
I'll make mine.
Alright. Mr. Herron made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Tippin, Ms. Tippin, second, all fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried, and grants.
Okay, grants, please establish budget code eight one six one zero. Okay, grants. Please establish Budget Code eight-one-six-one-zero dash three-one-zero-zero for Professional Services, Department of Housing and Community Development. CDBG, Lonsom Pine Regional Industrial Development Authority Opportunity Designing Planning Grant. Reimbursement will be appropriated after received and deposited at the treasurer's office.
Need a motion on the grants?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Cruz made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Tipton, a second. I'll fair hope to send out.
I oppose.
Motion carried. Is that it on those?
Yes.
Let's take a say on the, uh, box.
For the Comprehensive Policy Management Team, Ralph Ogde has resigned from that position. You have one applicant, Elizabeth Van Mary.
Do we have any nominations for this appointment on this Comprehensive Policy Management Team?
I'll make this, Van Mary.
Any other nominations? Not need a motion. Nomination ceased and brought back from action.
I'll make a motion. Nomination ceased and brought back from action.
Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cruz, a second. I'll fair hope to send out.
I oppose.
Motion carried.
For the Recreation Board, District Three, you have one person who has expressed interest. Keith Warner from Nicholsville.
Do we have any nomination for this Recreation Supervising Board?
I'll nominate Mr. Keith Warner.
Any other nominations? Not need a motion. Nomination ceased and brought back from action.
So moved.
Mr. Cruz made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cruz, a second. I'll fair hope to send out.
I oppose.
Motion carried. Is that it? All right, I have fifteen. Just calculating.
Hello, have my report and excuse me, I'm happy to answer any questions. I did wanna address something from earlier in the meeting, speaking of cans of worms. In a different respect, the community situation in Hiltons with that business. We as the county government, we, if it was, could be regulated, it would be by zoning. It can't be because it's an allowed use. It can, it still has to go through David Gilmer's building office. He, uh, he'll have to get a building permit to change the use of that building. He, under the zoning ordinance, even though it's an allowed use, can, has, there are restrictions about the parking and the number of handicap spaces and occupancy level and the number of parking spaces. So there's that that can be regulated, but beyond that, we can't do anything else. I would caution having an agenda item next month on that. I think it's wonderful what the community is doing, coming together and addressing this directly with him. He is open to being engaged that way. That's perfect, I think. That's what needs to happen when we can't do anything. So I just wanted to say that I, um, you don't wanna single out the business and get involved when there's not anything that we can legally do.
It's important. I think it, I think it's, I appreciate that, Sally, and I think it's frustrating a lot of times when things like this happen.
Yeah.
And, um, a lot of times, the only recourse that people feel like they can, uh, make is, you know, to the board supervisors. And, uh, and, and, and in this particular situation, um, by virtue of them already been established in the, in the county and, um, I guess a change of venue is kind of what's required, is that right? And then Mr. Gilmer takes, taking care of that. I think the Health Department's involved, you know, in terms of all that. But then there's other routes to address.
The ABC license-
Exactly.
Is another route that has to be brought to your all's attention as a board. Anybody that gets an ABC license a chance for public comment then. So I feel for Mr. Bright. I, I think it's great that he came and brought it to you all. I think that's what citizens' expression is for.
Yeah.
It's just we're limited in what we can, even though you wanna do everything you can for somebody, we just, we can't always help the way we want to, if we can do more harm than help.
We hadn't faced that before, Sally, and, you know, I didn't know, and I'm glad you come.
I know. It's kinda like the other thing.
Yeah.
So I was gonna say something today.
Well, I'm glad you did. But we'll not be an agenda item then for the main meeting, so we don't have, we'll let it go. We don't have, you know, the works is, is what it is. We, the zoning is what it is and nothing we can do.
And I can appreciate Sally for what you've said too. So it's opened a lot of our eyes, you know, to this situation and, uh, and so with this particular situation, there are other options and so forth, so. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you so much for, yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Arn, can I ask you a question?
You should have your green sheet in your pocket. The general fund balance after claims was seven million, five hundred, eight thousand, seven hundred, nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. And your comparison chart shows that we are quite a bit above this time last year. But I will caution, we have three items that I know of that's pretty large, that'll take about two million dollars of that, so don't get too excited.
Well, actually, for about fifteen cents. One of them is school?
Yes. Um, under claims, your early claims for the month totaled two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents. Some of the larger regular claims are advanced disposal, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-three cents. Appalachian Juvenile Commission, that's a quarterly payment, the fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Lonsom Pine Regional Library, fourth quarter, fifty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Scott County Health Department, fourth quarter, sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and fifty cents. And Wing Gate Appraisal Service, first invoice, thirty-three thousand dollars for property reassessment. So total claims for the month that needs approving is six hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents.
Is that the first payment we've made?
Yes, sir.
They're getting updates. They're my house about a month ago, so they're, they're getting out there. All right. How much is the school system? How much did you have in our database about that?
A little over nine hundred thousand. You have that, plus you have the quarterly regional jail payment. That's between five and six hundred thousand, and then the CPMT is three hundred and thirty-ish. So those three things together will total around two million.
Any questions on the, uh, on the claims? The one thing, and I've asked this before, and you might not even know, but the, the library costs that much. I know we, we're in this regional library thing with the, the counties, but how much is the library used? And I know they have the computers, there are people come in, use, use that, uh, for obvious reasons, I guess, they come in and do that, but as far as the library itself, I, as we get, as technology, I look, everything I want, I can find on the internet books or anything that's on there. But anyway.
They do do a lot of, uh, programs at the library for pre-school, pre-school age and for school-aged kids, plus provide hotspot at the library. So as far as their usage, I think they stay pretty busy.
All right. I know that in the regional jail, a lot of these pops up and I know we don't see anything here. Has there been a, a, a change of count of the inmates? And, and we've had some discussion with some of the other board members about, um, and Danny may want to address this. This is a question you brought up. Can I ask for Danny?
What I said was, I missed Sally too, that we're having to keep these inmates. They should be in the Department of Corrections. We're having to house them down there. We're having to pay their about twelve dollars a day or whatever. Costs us probably twenty-four dollars a day to keep each one of them. If we could use COVID money, if COVID makes us keep them, why can't we use COVID money to pay their jail costs?
I'm working with the regional jail on that to get a concrete number, and I have March through June concrete. And once this year's reconciliation with the regional jail is complete and we have the amount that was actually paid per inmate, we will be able, if the board chooses to do so, use COVID money for that portion.
Cares Act.
Yes, that's one of the things that we've been working on. We just need to get through June and see what that final number is before we use that money for that. It's gonna be several hundred thousand dollars.
It'll help a lot on, I mean, it's cost more to keep them because of COVID, so that'd be great to do that, and I'm sure the other counties will manage to.
And we also have, um, the regional jail reconciliation came back more than was in this year's budget. So it would be my suggestion, when we get to the June Board of Supervisors meeting, is take that money and prepay toward our reconciliation that we're gonna be paying in July, and that will help next year's budget as well as get that reconciliation amount down some. Because it's gonna be a pretty good size number, because we're quite a bit over budget.
This next round of, uh, COVID money is coming, and I hear maybe just four million dollars is maybe coming there about-
Four point two.
How much?
Four point two.
Four point two.
Yeah.
It's coming to pots of money. You'll get, um, half this, it's my understanding, there's nothing concrete out yet. Half this year within sixty days, so probably in June, and then the next half will come next year, a year later. And you have until twenty-twenty-four to spend that money. But our original cares allocation, we have until December this year.
Most of it gone, then?
We still have about one point two million.
Let me go and say, yeah, uh, something that came up at the Leno Whisco meeting. Uh, there is money that they have, and I'm hoping the small businesses in this county will, will pay attention to this. If they're even double back and pay, they'll reimburse them the rent they paid through April of last year up to present. And they can get, actually get their rent paid. If there's money there for it, they gotta build the process to get it.
That money's been expended.
Well, I think there's more coming, is what you said. Yeah, there's more.
But the pot that we have currently has all been taken care of.
Okay, this is, this is additional money, the way I understood. Is that what y'all, you understood?
The Scott County businesses did not take advantage of that.
That's what they said. Wise County, they wore out of Wise County.
We did five rounds. The first three rounds was county, I'm on that group. The first three were county specific, and then after that, it was open up to everybody to use the next two rounds. And Wise County and Lee County businesses really took advantage of it, and the Scott County businesses did not.
So I, I think Scott County needs to take advantage of it. I mean, that's personal.
Well, they said the money was, they said they need backup. I said, no, there's still money there, so I don't know if it's another round of money. I know that if that money's gone, it must be more money coming, not anymore.
He said there was more businesses in Wise County than the other two was the only reason he gave for that too, so.
Right.
We've got businesses that could use that.
If they'll apply for it, all they gotta do is call, and they just, and they give wheels rolling. It's free money, so.
Call Leno Whisco, call, uh-
It's Brian Kim.
Brian Kim. Yeah, that's what they say. But anyway, get the word out there. If it's, if it's available, they need to take advantage of it. I mean, I assume see it coming in Scott County, it's Lee or Wise County or City of Orange, so anyway. It needs to be, needs to be done out. All right, go ahead. Anything else?
Total claims are six hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-three cents.
Need a motion to pay bids?
So will Mr. Herron.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Herron, are you okay with that? All right, Mr. Herron, a second. I'll fair hope to send out.
I oppose.
Motion carried. Ms. Lane?
I have anything else.
Anything else? All right. Mr. Distin, won't let me here, will he, for the?
He will not.
Yes, that presentation. Let me go and say something. We had a meeting with the folks at Duffield, at Leno Whisco, with the folks off Cliff Mountain, and it's been really good. There's a lot of people there. Was it about twenty people? There probably was somewhere there about.
Probably, yes.
And they've given us some concrete dates now as to when this is gonna happen on Cliff Mountain. The bids that go out, help me here, Sal, does it, the bids go out, I think, June first. They're opening the bids July the sixteenth. Construction should start around, uh, September twentieth, the first.
I think it was the first.
They said September the first. And completion date was May of twenty-two. Those people hated to hear that late start date and the completion date, but at least there's light in the tunnel now. But it's actually moving faster than, than anybody even thought it could ever happen. They've gotta get some things, now environmental impact studies done, some things, you gotta jump through some hoops to get it done, but hopefully it will happen sooner than later. A couple of people there, they were hoping it would be completed by this fall, but it's gonna start in September and be completed, uh, in May of twenty-two. Anyway, the funding's there. That's phase one. They're looking at phase two. Eventually, they're proposing to get the grant money for that. Hopefully, that will happen too, and so anyway. They said they had to go through another winter without water, and they're gonna have to, it looks like. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna happen any quicker than that. The only thing I suggest, if they could, if they, if the bid goes out June first and they open it on July the sixteenth, that they could shorten that time span, six weeks for them to, between the bids and opening. Maybe get the contractor, they, they, the contractor they talked to, they're encouraging them to get to as fast as they could to get started maybe before September, but who knows? It's just, you know, hard to get it done, but hopefully that will happen that way. Those people are very thankful, this board, they are. I mean, they're just really, they couldn't say enough, could they say enough? They're just so appreciative of what this board has done and getting, the water's gonna be a while, but still, it's quicker than usual, even at that rate, it's off actually than what normally takes. What happened, getting that grants, uh, they use it once a year. They did another round of grants in October, which they usually don't do that, so they fell in at a good time to get that money, uh, you know, to get those, get those grants. And, and the people that funded it was, uh, you know, Leno Whisco, they threw some money in, that coal field water development fund, the, uh, CGSP, they're right, the money come in from that, so anyway, it's about seven hundred thousand dollar project. It is gonna happen. Those people will get water and, uh, got a couple of issues too with getting, gotta have a pump station, getting, uh, the property, the easement for the people, that's that, to get that pump station set, and get easement for getting the lines across people. Most of, most of the lines will be on V-Doc, right-of-ways. It's more like the paperwork from them, getting them on board with it to use their right-of-ways for putting the water system in. But it's Cliff Mountain. It's called that for a reason, a lot of rock, so they got a lot of rock to go through. Anyway, that's not a much additional presentation. This is what happened Monday when we had the meeting down there. And I, I gotta tell you, Frida, I called her Monday morning, get ready to go for this ten o'clock meeting at Leno Whisco. She said, no, it's two o'clock. And I said, I think it's ten. Will she give me an over note? I've been there four hours waiting. It was two o'clock and I had doubts ten, so. Thank you, Frida, for saving me four hours of my time. But I was going to ten o'clock, you know, I really was, but, you know. Anyway, comments from each district. Darrell, you first.
Uh, I noticed we've got the cameras in at U-Mobile. How are they working? Are they working pretty good?
They're working fine. I have them up on my iPad, Darrell, and, uh, if you wanna view what they look like after the meeting, uh, any of you, I can show them to you.
All five of them up?
All five of them are working.
Oh, what are you having, what are you having to solve?
Well, we really don't wanna-
Okay, gotcha.
Put that out there. Any, any site is subject to video surveillance.
And what you do with this comments, I'll go back to this six-year plan thing we have. We'll talk about it. We'll do comments, and we'll get back to this, what we talked about selecting the roads for that, uh, six-year plan. Anything else, Darrell?
No, I just, I hope they help.
They've already increased our leader control officer's caseload on investigations and stuff. And have been beneficial to the transfer station, just seeing that they need to get to that site to, uh, uh, keep it empty to, so, uh, they'll be available. So they've been a useful tool so far.
I've noticed along the road too, there's a lot of trash. Are there type of people around picking up trash on roads now? around picking up trash on roads now?
Stacy has a number of people that's in the, uh, assigned a highway program at Scott Services, uh, but I'm not aware that the jails have gotten any crews out.
I have seen, I have seen a lot of trash, uh, people just drive along, scrub it out wherever they get to eat.
If, if, if I could, while, while Mr. Jeter mentioned that, I'd want to remind the board and the citizens that April is Scott County's, uh, litter awareness month, that we do, uh, litter education, uh, through our litter control officer. April Addington, Environmental Teacher at Twin Springs High School is having a litter pickup that our litter control officer is involved in on April the seventeenth in Nicholsville between nine and one, has a really cool tee-shirt, if you want to participate in that, or any citizen wants to participate in that. Also, uh, Stacy has, uh, put up two billboards about, uh, litter education. One is down on Jackson Street, just across from Reed Hall Road in that area, and the other is on, uh, twenty-three South, about at the seven mile marker. Uh, if you want to take a look at that, hopefully we can get, uh, a little more education out there. Uh, I know it's unfortunate to look at our roads, and I hope people realize it's not, it don't just look ugly to us, um, it should be embarrassing to us when other people from other areas come into this area, and it may deter a business or industry from locating that area when they see litter along the roads. So, uh, you know, encourage people to think about the impacts of litter beyond it just being illegal to do. Anyway, thank you.
Anything else, Darrell?
Yeah, I would like to thank all the staff and, uh, the attorney and, um, Frida, Bill, and, uh, Amy, she's not in here, Tina, all of you that work hard and, uh, to help make this county go and make us look good, and I appreciate the Board of Supervisors. We all have the same common thing, you know, in mind in trying to help our county go forward. And I would just like to do a kind of a shout-out, I guess, for, uh, the VDOC issue. People can go online if they have issues, I know there's a lot of people out there have issues with, uh, this last flood. You can go online and you can put that in there, and that's what they want you to do, and they're pretty quick about following up with that. They have their meetings at VDOC, and that's how they determine, you know, where these areas are at. And, uh, they, they want the citizens to be able to go on, online and be able to do that, that's the whole purpose of it. That way they can get to them faster and get, you know, situations taken care of. And I was pretty much, um, enlightened about what they shared about the machinery to help, you know, with our county and cleaning the ditches and the culverts out and so forth. And that'll be a great help to our county. And I think that's about it, that's all I have.
Mr. Herron?
Appreciate what everybody's doing. Looking forward to what's going to happen next year or two. Hope everything get back, gets back to normal, it's going to, it'll get back to normal. So, uh, you know, we, uh, all of us, I'm sure, have had somebody that's been affected by this virus and still are. You know, I know someone's got it now, you know, we know, uh, uh, some kids that's had it, uh, one that passed away here just a few weeks ago, and, uh, you know, and we've got to keep moving forward as a, as a county, and, uh, everything's going to work out, but appreciate what everybody's doing. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Brick?
Don't have much, I, I really appreciate VDOC coming and, and us getting our problems of our patrons and roads. Ms. Kegley, really appreciate you keeping us on track on some things, so that, that's great.
Sometimes she really does earn her money hard.
Yeah.
We, we, we stress her out enough. I do.
And, and one thing I, I don't know that much about, but I want to mention anyway, this past weekend, I'm sure we all had calls with our TV and internet. And, uh, I think it was a DOS problem. It seems like we've talked about DOS in this building handle, that we need to upgrade it. So on the, the Budget Committee, when you get to it, remember what happened this past weekend all over the county with DOS, and we're trying to correct theirs, I hope. Before we have any problems.
It handles.
And that's all.
That's it.
I don't have anything, I'm giving you a break.
Trudy.
Um, no, I do, I, I'm, I'm just going to echo what everybody else said about the staff and everything, that, that is a tremendous blessing to have in our back pockets, um, to keep us on the straight and narrow, making sure that we don't overstep our boundaries and that we don't, you know, set a precedent for things that we will re-correct later on. I think that's great, um, and I appreciate that. I do appreciate the VDOC people too. I mean, I, I've gotten a ton of calls about that as well. You know, they talked about Methodist Camp Lane, um, up there, we've talked about that before in the past. I'm glad they're, they're, they're trying to help those folks. Um, that is, that is a, is a terrible situation. And that's all I have at this point.
I don't have anything else, and to thank the staff, and I do appreciate VDOC, what they're doing. But VDOC's got dumped on, there on that Methodist Camp thing, it's a freak problem, and they're trying to convince the local department, the Creek is doing, so anyway, I, I'll be, a lot of people fussing about what they're doing there, but it's a better one ahead. Anything, nothing to close session, is it? Let's go back to the, uh, six-year plan and that paper in front of you.